Let's get Cal-Bor. Go ahead and call roll.
Right, Cora. Fields.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Leslie.
Here.
Redner.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
I should ask.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
To approve?
One second.
Fields.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Leslie.
Yes.
Redner.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
I should ask.
First thing, item is qualifications and duties of the Director of Schools. I thought we need to look at just qualifications, because I looked at several counties and everything, and we're looking at the education and years of experience. And I thought maybe a little more than a master's, possibly. I think maybe at least a master's plus thirty minimum. And then prefer doctorate.
It's not any harder to get an EDS if you get the master's plus thirty.
Yeah.
That's a little better degree.
Yeah.
A little more specialized.
You want to do maybe EDS? Do the instead of master's plus thirty, maybe do EDS?
I think so.
This is the current policy?
Yes, that's his current.
Well, right now, the way we've got it written gives us some flexibility. May I? Director, what's your thoughts?
I think the more qualified you are, the higher the degree, the more qualified you are in able to prefer.
Because you're going to get that more.
I do think that it should be very specific to the education level.
So I think more. So you want to go with the EDS?
I think so.
Okay. So change the master's degree and educate to the EDS.
Except for the minimum?
Yes.
The question is, do you want to allow a plus thirty? The number of courses is basically the same.
Basically, that's what I was thinking, if you did a master's plus thirty and EDS or almost.
Almost the same.
Because EDS, I guess, is more, I guess, more specific. More specialized.
Glad you guys know, because that's one area I have no knowledge in.
Yeah.
You could word it EDS and/or master's plus.
So why don't we just do that, a master's plus thirty and/or EDS?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you don't have to be certified in administration? Because what if you have your master's in curriculum and instruction, but your thirty-plus is in a variety of?
Variety. I think you should have at least, well, that's true, because like, like with my, like, a lot of people should get a master's, they'll get it in curriculum and instruction, where like my master's is in administration and instruction. Supervision, so.
Because the degree in administration is the part that you have finance classes. You don't have that in just a regular master's degree.
Curriculum and instruction is going to be specifically toward that. That's true.
And an EDS has a plan. Right?
Yes.
Depends on your level, your EDS can be in council.
It can be, yeah, it can be, it could be, you could have like a master's plus thirty with a master's in administration and supervision. You need to have something in there with that.
You could add to the end of it with certification being administration supervision.
So I don't know how, we would word that with a master's plus thirty with.
Certification in administration supervision.
Yeah.
Take and do a master's.
So do that, just like a master's plus thirty.
In education.
Leadership. Or EDS.
With certification.
And administration and supervision, yes.
Let me tell you.
Because you definitely have to have that. I mean, principals have to have that in order to be a principal, so.
Okay.
Generally have that when you get your masters.
From the very beginning, preferred doctorate, do you want to strike that?
No, we're getting it with a preference for a doctorate degree. I put that in there. And then, then years of experience, successful experience in school administration. Change that to, I'm thinking, five years. And I don't know, I think, you know, sharing what you said, with central, central office experience.
Experience would be lovely, I think.
Yes. We could put on there, central office experience preferred.
Yeah.
Preference for central office experience.
How many years central office experience are you just?
We just want to do five years experience, except in school administration. Preference for.
Preference for central office.
Yeah. I mean, preference, I'd like it, I've been able to, I think having, having been able to, being a school principal. Definitely.
So you change that.
I'm thinking out loud. Just, what do you guys think, as far as?
I think five is a good.
I mean.
With a preference for central office.
And a preference for central office experience too.
So do you need to be, what, you got school administration, everybody knows school administration is your assistant for your principal. You're going to include that? Or does it need to be school principal? Because your administration could be central office.
How many people, as far as being director of the school, that never been as principal of the school? How often is it?
In Nashville, a lot, like.
A lot, yeah.
One's an attorney, one was a general in the army, so there's a lot who have not had central office experience, but they do have experience in, of their leadership.
Right, but no necessarily school experience.
And I'm thinking, I've got a guy I know, I don't foresee him applying, but he's in the O'Grady system, and he's never been a principal that I'm aware of, but he's been a vice principal and worked in central office, and, you know, I think if we just say principal only, we may limit ourselves.
Well, I think just, I think school administration, because it could have been, you know, somebody like that.
Yeah.
Experienced as an assistant and then central office.
And Sharon, you were never a school principal?
I was a supervisor, I've never a principal.
She's a supervisor.
I was a supervisor for twenty-five years.
And did the best job statewide.
And a wonderful superintendent.
Thank you. Shortly.
What was it, what, was it just six months?
October till April.
I thought you were in till the end of the school year.
It did. Yes, it did. No, it wasn't. Six months.
Okay, so I'd say five years experience in school administration, central office experience preferred. And just leave it at that. That way, that kind of covers if they're not a principal, they're assistant principal, or whatever. And really, that's the only thing, unless you guys want to add anything else, that's really.
They're not going to have to be a Baptist or a Baptist or anything.
Now, if you want to add that to it.
Thank you, babe.
We might get in trouble.
Yeah, we might get in trouble over that. Strike it over at Ross.
He's going to have you on the front page.
Yeah. Yeah. To the full board, I mean, is this, if this is a sense of urgency, then you will need to place it, only to do in the end and place these on the agenda for tomorrow on first and final reading. These are, you know, urgency.
I think that would be.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, then.
When do we have to have this to TSBA?
I don't, that seems like the TSBA is going to start their search and everything in January.
Oh, I, okay.
January said they had adjusted the timeline.
I have no idea. So, is it, did he say when it was?
Well, I thought you were going to cover that tomorrow night.
He's going to send it, he said he would send it to me and for me to make in a agenda, so.
Okay.
It'll be on there.
So I'm also. Considering, I think I have to be chaired tomorrow night. We might have a mess, who knows? Okay. But, yeah, I guess we need to get that passed as soon as possible.
Okay.
Especially with the TSBA doing their search, so.
Do you wish to send all of these at once to the board for full approval? Or do you want to do, you want to do it individually or just as a group as you're finished?
We could do this as a group as we're finished.
Okay.
Would that be just the easiest thing to do?
That's the pleasure.
We're going to do that. Okay. Any questions about this discussion on qualifications? Because that's the only part of the policy that I would do, I think they did need to change. You have a motion?
I have a motion. Oh, do we need to wait till the end and do it?
Oh, okay, 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 never mind. I don't know what I'm doing. Okay. Okay, we can go on to the next. Okay, community use of school facilities. I think we've got an issue with wanting to change.
Well, just wanting to add a line, so the junior pro at Jellicoe. The fee, and I think you said launtina, is that what the fee schedule is? That this fee may be waived at the principal's discretion.
I'm fine with that addition.
I am too.
And I don't know anything other than, I had like five phone calls in the last two weeks, asking what the board's policy is for people using schools for birthday parties. I do not think we need to be renting out our schools for birthday parties.
It should have been followed by this, shouldn't it? Shouldn't have been under this community use?
Well, it says something about. May be used for public as approved by the board. And there doesn't seem to be anything expressly saying that it can't be. That I'm aware of.
And that just creates a big mess.
I think like number, I think it sounds like number four, all activities must be under adult supervision and approved by the building principal.
That's where that's falling in as the.
Birthday party, that's that at number four is where that falls in.
Now, if you let one, and you're just opening up a can of worms, like I probably got the same phone call a few times, waiting to get about it.
And I don't, I don't know any other specifics other than people were asking me what the policy is.
What the policy was.
And I said, my understanding, you know, it's essentially principal's discretion. But I do think, if we're modifying this, I do think we need to essentially have, I don't know that our schools should be for private use ever.
Well, they should follow all these.
Well, this, pass this down, you all can look at this, this is, I mean, it's from two thousand nine, but that's what schools follow. That's the, when that pay scale came in and what was allowed to be used, the level one, level two, level three.
And that's there.
Yes, that's. And on that second page is where that, I think it's the second page where the pay scale is in. Like, the only people who don't pay are the school clubs if it's used during school hours. But if it's after hours and it's going to require a custodian, then there's a charge given because a custodian has to, that's additional work beyond their workday.
Yeah, I think this particular group that's asking it to use it for about eight weeks, they have their own, they get their officer-to-be security, they have their own planner, I mean. It's been seamless since this new group took over junior pro. And that's why they were.
So what if? So here's my thought process, on number three, it says school facilities may be not, may not be used for private profit, and should we say or private events?
Unless they want to have a funeral there.
Okay.
And we're going to let them have it.
Or could you add a number eleven, maybe, that says anything, any other events that's not falling into these, be at the principal's discretion?
Okay, on the class three private or profit-making groups, now this one leaves it to the discretion of the superintendent. From two thousand nine.
I would rather, I mean.
It says private celebrations are discouraged in this.
I think we need to.
I think we just need to just put it in the lobby.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, because all the gym floors that have been redone and everything.
It can be, because you can bring in all kinds of stuff.
If you tell one, one yes, you got to tell everybody yes.
But Sharon had a good time, because I know of the one that, like.
The funeral, yeah.
That was killed last summer.
Do you need to allow for that?
Lance Martin's, with his grandson. He was in the gym.
I mean, do we, do we want our schools, and this is not me.
Don't want to discourage that.
I mean, but do we want our schools to be? Do you want? I mean, it, and that's just a general question, I'm not saying I have an opinion one way or another.
Do we want to, because when I was at the high school, we had to, had the Hittigal out in the ROTC building, and we had Tony Brown in the gym.
One thing they like to try to get gym floors for is for.
That is kind of a, when you go to.
Junior pro types.
Around.
That travel links. They want to come in and use our facilities.
And here's, here's one thing, I'm thinking back on that, and then we can circle back. I think we need to say that it needs to be nonprofit organizations, because like, the one at Jellicoe, for example, is a wonderful organization, very expanding, whatever. What happens if I decide I want to start my own junior pro, and I'm charging five hundred bucks a kid, and I'm using, abusing these facilities that I'm now getting for free, and I'm pocketing all the money? I do think we need to put in there that they should be a 501(c)(3) organization. That way, they're accountable.
That's the situation I was aware of, and I refuse to go up the doors for it.
But, so circling back, I mean, do we, do we as a board think that our schools should host funerals? I don't know that I have a position one way or another.
Depending on the situation.
I think it'd be.
Tony Brown.
I mean, you know, you got, that was a situation, almost, I think maybe in a situation like that, that should be to the discretion of the director of schools.
So what if we modified three to say school facilities may not be used for private profit or private events, without the approval of the director of schools? What do you think, Director? He wants words out of here soon.
I'm thinking ahead for someone else, because that, it puts them in a bad position, because they may not know the person, you know? They may not know Tony Brown and know what an asset he was to the school and what it meant to the students. And what kind of, and the crowd of people that it's going to bring.
You know, and it's just like with John Brown, how much money he gave to the school.
Oh, yes.
You know, that was a huge thing there. So, you know, it's, I think maybe with the funeral part might be something that, I don't know.
That would be decided by the executive committee, which is your chairman of school?
Yeah, you could do, yeah.
That or your school principal, because.
Yeah, your principal may not want it.
Yeah, I mean, that might be, it may not, because, you know, you're going to have, you know, we've had situations that.
Should, what if we put, school facilities may not be used for private profit or private events, da-da-da-da-da-da, and then tack on a sentence at the end that says something to the effect of, you know, celebrations of life for students or employees will be at the, will be allowed at the discretion of the executive committee?
I think that would be dead.
Again, I just don't, you know, I think we get into a Pandora's box where Suzie has a.
The committing, like Chris said.
Or not put it in there at all, because the situation doesn't arise that often. You know what I'm saying? And if it does arise, then maybe look at that situ, each individual situation and not even address it in the policy right now.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because if this is private events, you know, and if it's something, say, you know, everybody's going to want to do it and say, listen, this isn't a policy, or whatever.
Do you have to have a meeting such as we're having now? So what are we changing that to, to?
So right now, it's at, to the principal of the school, is that what that says?
Or just look at it as a private event, is that what you're saying?
I'm just looking at a private.
School facilities, school facilities may not be used for private, for private profit or private events, except.
Yeah.
And then.
The line at number ten, this fee may be waived at the principal's discretion.
Yeah.
I think we should say that fee may be waived for nonprofit groups at the principal's discretion.
I think to Grace's nonprofit, and other nonprofit recreational religious point, or.
For nonprofit, so. Do we need to put that in a sentence at that, at the part? So you'll put in there, fee may be waived for nonprofit at the principal's discretion, right?
I think, again, my big concern is I don't want, you know, me starting a roller hockey club and charging five hundred dollars a person and, you know, using the facilities for free.
Real good.
Yeah. First thing that came to mind, that seemed silly enough and not be applicable to any situation.
Any current.
Any current one, there we go.
Yeah.
Because inevitably, I say, you know, input angle of the track.
Yeah, on number three, after profit or private events.
I think that was it, wasn't it? And then number two, I thought that would be, they may be waived.
Right. For nonprofit at the principal's discretion.
And I don't know if we need to add a disclaimer, but nonprofits should include 501(c), should be 501(c)(3) organizations. Should, I mean, should we say something like legally registered nonprofits? I just don't want there to be a confusion that, I've got a not-for-profit organization, but it's not a legal not-for-profit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense.
Oh, no, this may, this may take it up.
What?
The majority of the students must be from, must be Campbell County students. That was another thing that Dale said. So this fee must be waived at the principal's, somewhere in there has to say that the students are, the students or participants are Campbell County student, Campbell County school students. That's what Dale recommended.
And that's what you're going to do about all these homeschoolers that can come and score.
As long as the majority is Campbell County students. That would allow you to have.
So what we're saying is the civic groups.
Majority of participants are.
Yes, all Campbell County school students. This fee may be waived. How are you going to squeeze that in there?
Well, just make that one sentence, fee may be waived for nonprofit at principal's discretion, and majority of participants must be Campbell County students. If that makes sense.
This fee may be waived by a principal's discretion for a legally registered nonprofit organization, given that the majority of students are currently enrolled in the Campbell County school system. Director, you see any red flags?
So the fee may be waived for nonprofit at.
Legal, I would say legally registered.
Legally registered, okay.
Because you've got 501(c)(3), you've got 501(c)(4) as well, like, I think like your American Legion, for example, I think they call it a 501(c)(4). I think your Masonic lodges do. It's likely different.
This is what I have so far, fee may be waived for legally registered nonprofit at principal's discretion, and majority of participants must be Campbell County students.
I've never heard of a birthday party at a school.
Oh.
Sippin' class.
Yeah, yeah.
No, yeah.
I'm glad we're getting away from that, because say.
Because teachers will come in, say, hey, we're going to have a big birthday party, and they will do it now.
No, I think this was on, after school or on the weekend or something.
Was it? Yeah.
Again, I know nothing about if there was or is a situation, other than like, literally, I think I had five or six people in a week of process, call me or email me or text me or Facebook me and ask what the policy was. And, yeah, I got no more context but it's a, you know, at principal's discretion, I don't think.
Yeah.
Could you imagine if all thousand-plus students at Campbell County High School wanted to have their birthday party there? I mean.
Well, and here's the thing, if you say yes to one, you got to say yes to all.
Because then you'll be setting yourself up for discrimination.
Oh, yeah.
Don't let one not.
Okay, anything else on use of facilities? That is, any questions?
Um, you're supposed to be asking.
Yep, it's all going to be next.
Okay. I thought you were wrapping it up, Jane.
I'm not wrapping it up, you know. Next, we have appeals to and appearances before the board. See if I've got a copy of that one? Here, and I thought, kind of typed it, just kind of revising it, I looked at.
You guys in there? Was it on page in bag?
Yeah, bag. Is there two? No, there's just one thing, there's just one thing. I looked at several. At ours, in Anderson Counties, and this one's a lot like Anderson Counties, and I really liked it.
And this is our current?
And this is our current.
Okay. And this is the proposed?
Yes, this is the proposed.
What are the differences?
Really, I took it. Hours, like, appearing before the board. Okay, I made it, I kind of simplified it. And that made like the part, like, if somebody wants to address something that's not on the agenda. That's adding an item to the agenda, and it's very simple. Individuals desiring to appear before the board shall submit a written request with descriptive materials to the officer. I think they only have to do that now, one week before the monthly school board meeting, which, which we still do. If the request is approved by the executive committee, the item will be placed on the agenda. If the individuals placed on the agenda will be recognized at the beginning of the meeting and given three minutes to speak if the item is addressed on the agenda. All requests submitted must be included in the board packet. I think we do that now, I just put it under adding an item to the agenda instead of putting it all under appearing before the board. Because we have people that are going to address something on the agenda, appear before the board beforehand. And on this one, a total time of everybody speaking is like fifteen minutes, you can adjust that, and then each person is given three minutes. And they have to.
I thought that was fifteen minutes per person or something?
No, 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 it's not fifteen minutes per person. The total public comment, the total public comment period is fifteen minutes. If you're speaking, you can get three. If there's five people, that's fifteen minutes.
If they're fifteen, they're a minute apiece.
Just kind of broke it down into those two different, number one. Just kind of broke it down into those two different, number one thing, it kind of gets a lot, I thought it was a little confusing.
Seems reasonable, honey?
Just kind of broke those two down instead of having it all together.
I'll make a motion that we recommend all of these changes to the full board.
First and second.
Yes.
First and final reading, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Craig Moore?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Reiner?
Yes.
Freyler?
Yes. So this will be added to the.
We'll have another one prepared for that.
He's going to come back after missing a minute, and you can. Move to adjourn?
Second.